Call to order. Can you hear me? I would call to order the October 6, 2025, public hearing on SEA 390 tentative agreements. Recognizing that we will form of all five board members, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will pause for a moment and ask your question. Thank you. Finally, agenda tonight, Dr. Kaufman, to be leading us through the SEA 390 tentative agreement of the Zionsville Community Schools.
Good evening, board members. Good evening, board members and members of the public. Leaders from Zionsville Community Schools and the Zionsville Educators Association met collaboratively in recent weeks following the statutorily outlined process to collectively bargain salary benefits for the 499 teachers serving Zionsville Community Schools. Following a process known as interest-based bargaining, leaders first outlined mutual goals and interests that were shared among members of the bargaining team. These interests included, but are unlimited to, teacher attraction and retention, stability, clarity, and support for teachers in the areas of modern permit provisions, safety, and overall physical and mental health. Improving teacher attendance to better support students was also an identified interest, as well as compliance of Indiana laws and regulations as identified by the Indiana Education Employment Relations Board, otherwise known as IRB. The Zionsville Educators Association ratified the tentative agreement on October 1, 2025. Key elements of the agreement are as follows. The parties agreed to a two-year agreement for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2027. During this time, should revenue sources equal an amount that would allow for an additional step increase on the salary schedule, the parties agree to reopen for the purpose of considering use of any additional funds should they become available. The starting salary for teachers in CCS has been increased to $52,500. During the 2025-26 school year, teachers who are eligible to receive a salary increase will move a total of six steps on the salary schedule, which equates to $3,000. Any teacher who already appears at Step G4 or beyond will move five steps on the salary schedule, totaling an increase in $2,500. During the 2026-2027 school year, eligible teachers will move a total of four steps on the salary schedule, which equates to $2,000. To be considered eligible for an increase, a teacher must be rated highly effective or effective on the prior year's evaluation, have been employed in CCS for a minimum of 120 days, and must not have taken any unauthorized leave starting with this current school year. In accordance with Indiana Code 20-28-9-2.5 established in recent legislative sessions, teachers who have added a literacy endorsement to their teaching license are also eligible to receive an additional $200 onto their base salary. In addition, the parties clarified that teachers will be paid their individual hourly rate as it relates to instruction provided during summer school. To support the growing number of students and affiliation experiences with clubs and athletics, the parties also agreed to add a select number of positions to the ECA schedule starting for the 2026-2027 school year. Additional robotics coaching positions were added at the elementary level to begin this school year. The parties also agreed to additional support for teachers, including enhancements to paid coverage during maternity and paternal leaves, a newly developed discretionary leave to support teacher absences directly related to circumstances connected to employment, and a one-day per semester for special education teachers to complete required paperwork in support of requirements under Article 7 in IDEA. After these increases are applied, a minimum salary for a full-time teacher in CCS will be $52,500. The average teacher salary in CCS after increases equates to $71,000. The administration would like to sincerely thank our SEA leadership for their time and collaboration on improving outcomes for all involved in CCS. In accordance with Indiana law, after tonight's hearing, the CCS Board of Trustees will meet on November 10, 2025 to consider our recommendation to approve this tentative agreement. The full tentative agreement can be found on the CCS website. At this time, I'd like to ask if there are any public comments that would like to be made specific to this hearing over the tentative teachers agreement.
Thank you, Mrs. Lammer. I think we've covered the business of the public hearing. I will adjourn from the public hearing and halt to order the regular meeting of Zionsville Board of School Trustees. Recognizing that we still have a form of all five board members, first on the agenda for tonight is public comments. Has anyone signed up to speak?
Hey.
Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing that, we will move along to the first item on agenda, the superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening, board members and members of the public. I'm pleased to introduce to you two key supporters of our school corporation for many, many years. Anne Pagano and Lori Byer are here this evening to share a little bit about Play On Zionsville and the impact that they've had as an organization in promoting music education here in the community. And thank you, ladies, for arranging for our lovely group that was playing for us before the meeting this evening under the direction of Mrs. Lammers. We're very appreciative of your presence tonight, and please share with us some highlights and what we can look forward to here from the Play On group.
Okay. Well, good evening. Thank you for giving us a few minutes to speak to you tonight, all of you. I'm Lori Byer, and this is Anne Pagano, and we're with Play On Zionsville. And we wanted to thank the string, of course, they're gone now. The string heard the play tonight, we think, we think they sounded fantastic, so. We last made a presentation, it was like 2022, I believe, so I'd like to remind you who we are and what we do. Play On Zionsville is a 501(c)(3) with the primary purpose of advancing instrumental music in Zionsville. That's our, that's what we do. First and foremost is the Musical Instrument Endowment Fund, held at the Community Foundation of Boone County. The endowment provides funding for music instruments for the high school band and orchestra. What we do, Play On Zionsville, raises funds for the endowment and, as well as administering the distributions of the fund. From time to time, we will also fund various music projects for other schools in the district where needs arise. But our biggest, biggest project is the endowment. So, let's see here. So, focusing on the endowment, each year when we receive the calculated spendable from the community foundation, our directors, Mr. Landrum and Ms. Lammers, have the opportunity to buy instruments that are kind of on their wish list. Or they can roll over the funds to the next year if they have something, a larger purchase in mind. They can do that for as long as they want. So, these are some of the instruments we've, we've planned, Zionsville, purchased through the years, through the endowment fund. We've bought paratones and tubas for the band, and as well as we bought some bass drums for them for the marching band. And then we've bought cellos and basses, a couple of those you saw tonight on the stage, and also even some bows. We think she had to buy some kind of, I don't know, fancy bows this year. So, anyway, and anyway, I was going to say, since 2015, so it's been 10 years, the endowment has funded over $66,000 worth of instruments in county.
This portion is called "Did You Know?" For orchestra. Keaton Lammers, who directed the group who was here tonight, this is her third year at the high school. Last year, in her second year, she was named the Indiana String Teachers Association High School Director of the Year. And what a wonderful way to represent Zionsville. I mean, not only on the state level, but I think nationally too. She's on the list somewhere saying she won that award. Also, under Keaton's stretch, and she has grown the orchestra by 40%. Under her directorship, all four orchestras received the highest level in honor of a gold rating with distinction. There are kids who get gold rating with distinction as a cut above. All four of the orchestras received that in Indiana State Music Association competition. Now for the band, I would urge you to turn on your TV to ABC on Thanksgiving Day. The Marching Eagles, directed by Tom Landrum, will be marching in the Philadelphia Thanksgiving Parade. Another way that our school is on the national platform. Now for our, oh, one more thing, October 24th, Community Night at the Stadium with the Marching Eagles. And if you attend, you will see many of the brass instruments, as well as percussion instruments that we have purchased. Now for "Did You Know?" about our goals. At the time, at this time, our funds at the Community Foundation are $343,000. We hope to grow the endowment to $500,000, and I think with the way our community is growing, we need to be there. So, we're working on it, we're going to help. With school's partnership and understanding the importance of a strong instrumental music program and fine arts, and they both enhance the student's academics, we plan to keep playing forward. And with your help, of course. So, if you look at your brochure, there's a QR code in there, and I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't ask you for a donation. Just click on there, easy peasy. Every dollar counts. I used to say every penny counts, but now we're on to every dollar. Oops. One penny through this. Anyway, our goal is $500,000. But anyway, I would like to thank you tonight to the school board, high school principal, Kim McDaniel, the band and orchestra directors, Jane Johnson, who holds our hand through this whole process and makes all of our things look pretty. And Dr. Kaufman, and of course, your support as well. We really couldn't do it without you, but thank you so much, and I'm so glad you enjoyed the string group, the real badness. Thank you. Thank you.
Lori, on the end, thank you so much for coming tonight and highlighting your strong work and also the invitation on October 24th to the Community Night. That will be well-attended and a great Friday night to come out and support music education in our schools. Thank you for your continued support and advocacy for our kids, we really appreciate it. Talking about advocacy and support for our students, I also would like to invite forward our Director of Unified Student Services, Casey Allen, and she is going to share with us this evening some program highlights, some important adjustments that are happening at the state level that our families and teachers are navigating. And so without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Allen to share a bit from our Unified Student Services Department. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. Good evening, board. It's an honor to be here to highlight my amazing department. We have lots to share, I'll try not to take up too much time, but it's hard to highlight all the great work, so I'm trying to paint a really broad picture. Happy to answer more specific detailed questions as we go through our FBN. So, under Unified Student Services, we serve two large populations of students. We serve students who receive accommodations through Section 504 plans, and we serve students through special education. Before we get into those specific groups, I'm pretty transparent in our, in the mission that we have here in Zionsville. Whenever we onboard new people into Unified Student Services, we go over these four points with them. You know, starting off students first always, that goes without saying, right? Within this work, it's very individualized, it's very nuanced, so we make sure that we're having detailed conversations about the students sitting before us. I come from the firm belief and philosophy that we offer a wide range of services that we'll talk about, but it's not about how kids fit within those programs, it's about how can we design a day using all that we have to meet their needs. Moving counterclockwise, consistent procedures and expectations, we'll get into this a little bit later with the new IEP program. But our, our staff really have their work cut out for them because the priority, the main focus is their work with kids. But there's this other really important part of our job that's following federal and state guidelines, rules and regulations. There's so much compliance that goes within our work, so it's important to us that we provide really clear guidelines so that their focus can stay on kids. We, we are really intentional about the ongoing professional development, thanks to the help of Chris Devereux and Christine Squire. We partner with academic services really closely to make sure that we're complementing that instruction that's happening within the general education classroom, and we're staying up to speed on evidence-based practices and research-based interventions that are occurring within those specialized classrooms. And then the top right, another one that I think is as important as the student first is relationships and grace. And those are two words you've probably heard me say before, but they really are the core of the work that we do here. I believe that good things happen when people are communicating, and things start to fall apart when we stop talking to one another. So, I really preach into this with our people that we are all about a relationship-driven approach. It's, I hold high expectations for our team members that they are constantly communicating with their families, that we're getting to know our students, that we're spending time investing in those relationships because that's where the power happens. But there's this notion of grace that really comes in with our work. Yeah, special education's really nuanced, and it's delicate, and it's sensitive, and it's important, and it's hard. And so, we meet families with grace as they walk their journey, but we also want to receive grace too because we're imperfect humans, right? And so, we're doing the best that we can. So, if we're giving and receiving grace along the way, really great things happen for kids within Section 504 and special education. So, Section 504 plans, this is a recap, I'm not going to read it to you, but Section 504 is governed by the Office of Civil Rights. It's a plan that you can have from birth to death, it's not governed by school age. In order to qualify for Section 504, you have to have a physical or mental impairment that substantially limits a major life activity. That substantially limits is the key phrase there, that our school people have to sit down and navigate. To what degree does that impairment substantially limit their access? So, 504s are focused on providing equal access through accommodation so that kids can continue to receive education in all of their classrooms. I really like visuals, I really like numbers, it's part of why I'm in special education. This is just a bar graph of just the last two years that shows our 504s by grade level. You'll see things really start to take off later, middle school through high school. We currently serve 514 students through a Section 504 plan. Unique to this school year and something that Christine Squire and I are really excited about, over the course of the last two years, Chris Devereux and Christine Squire have led our school counselors in a wide variety of work. And really looking at Section 504s has been a large part of that conversation. School counselors are the gatekeepers of the Section 504 plans. Over time, we started to realize that we needed to take a step back and think about what are the needs of these kids and making sure that we're actually addressing their needs. We have multi-tiered systems of support framework in place, so it's a genet initiative, and it's a framework where building teams come together and they analyze data, and they progress monitor, and they provide skill instruction. Let me give you an example of what happens a lot. So, we have a lot of really wonderful physicians within our community, and they're not aware of multi-tiered systems of supports. They wouldn't be. Chris and I, I don't know where she is, we have, we have big plans to meet with the physicians in our community to share more about our multi-tiered systems of support framework. But oftentimes what happens is a doctor will see a student, and they'll write on his script pad that they need a 504 plan. What we're missing there is, but what skill instruction we may need. Yes, they might need accommodations, but how are we helping them navigate with that impairment in school? So, Chris and I took on the task of meeting with all of our counselors. We were finishing with the high school Friday and after fall break, but up to this, after October 22nd, we will have reviewed all 514 504 plans. And I don't say that to brag, I share that with you because we are so intentional about the kids that we serve, and we want to make sure that we're doing right by everyone. So, we're meeting with counselors, we're having really great conversations about do they need that skill instruction through MTSS? How should those conversations happen with families to make sure that if they need a 504, they need a 504, but that we're not missing anything else? So, Child Find is the piece that pulls 504 special education all together. We're legally bound by IDEA, which is the Individuals for Education Disabilities Act, which is a federal law. It requires public schools to locate, identify, and evaluate kids for special education services. You might not know, but we're responsible for providing services for students the day they turn three through their 22nd birthday. So, the process for that, it's a pretty comprehensive process, unlike a Section 504 that involves accommodations. accommodations. When we're looking at special education services, it's really a comprehensive approach. So oftentimes, it's an evaluation that's done by one of our eight school psychologists, possibly a speech and language pathologist, occupational therapist, physical therapist, perhaps our deaf and hard of hearing teacher, blind low vision, but it's a full team approach, and they're looking at eligibility under one of thirteen eligibility categories. That we'll show you here in a second. Once that evaluation takes place, if a student, if it's determined that they meet eligibility, then a case conference committee develops a proposed individualized education plan, an IEP. So an IEP is different from a 504 in that it involves designing goals that have specially-designed instruction outlined, how are we going to teach them, how are we going to progress monitor those goals to make sure that they're achieving their maximum potential? It talks through what their services look like, it explains their least restricted environment. There are several components to an IEP that have to be completed through that process. So within Zionsville, we're super fortunate, thanks to your support, to offer a really comprehensive continuum of service. One of the really amazing things is, I've been here now for eight years, and when I first started here, our preschool continuum was two developmental preschool classrooms. And in eight years, we've opened six preschool classrooms to meet the needs of our youngest learners, which is so incredible. We have not only developmental preschool, but we have a full-day foundational preschool classroom that supports students who need to work towards maintaining for a full day in school. We have two transitional preschool classrooms. Those are community placements where half of the class are students that are typical and half of the students are students that have a disability. We also, thanks to your support, opened our first phonology classroom last year. It was so well-received that we moved it to a five-day program this year, and in addition to the classroom, we're also running phonology groups. So with this classroom, the focus is for students that have a language impairment, but that language impairment's really impacting those early literacy skills, and so we're approaching that in preschool so that they're ready in kindergarten. It's actually been so well-received that Christina Moore, one of my assistant directors, and I have met with three other school districts who have heard about this, and they've come out to see our continuum of service at Pleasant View for preschool. So we're really proud of that work. Of course, then, we have our resource programming that's located on all nine campuses. Resource is supports for students that are on track to receive their high school diploma. They just need time, whether it's outside of the class or pushing into their genet class to help them work on those goals. At the high school, it's important to note that it's called basic skills, and thanks to the work of Perrin and Maureen, at the high school now, kids can take their basic skills class for an elective credit, which is really wonderful, so then they're not behind with their credits. We have essential skills programming. Essential skills is for students that have an intellectual disability, so oftentimes these are students that are working to earn an alternate diploma or certificate of completion from high school. We divide that up in life skills, functional academics, and then at the elementary level, we have an autism classroom. That autism classroom we opened about five years ago when we were seeing a major influx of kids returning from applied behavioral analysis centers, and it's a good way to bridge the gap between that type of environment and then public education. We have intense intervention, that's also a program for students that are on diploma track. Intense intervention comes into play for students that struggle with their emotional regulation, maybe they just need more breaks throughout the day. They operate within a level system so that kids are earning, you know, they're earning their time to be out with their genet peers, but it's based on what their emotions, what they can handle in those situations. And then finally, we have our SOARS program, which is our program for students eighteen to twenty-two at the high school. It's not special education without an acronym, so SOARS stands for Student Opportunities to Achieve Real-Life Success. We have a teacher at the high school that oversees this program. He is exceptional at what he does. He goes out and advocates in the community. We currently have, this has probably changed since the last week that I've done this, but we currently have eighteen businesses that are willing to provide a paid work experience for our students, and we have ten businesses that will provide volunteer work. We have more businesses interested than we have kids available to fill these spots, but what a great problem to have, because now what happens is when we have a student that's interested and they're ready to take this next step, they now have a variety of options to choose from, so we can really align with what their interests are, and it's not just one or two businesses that they're having to go forth with. So here's our special education enrollment in a nutshell. This is the trend for the last five years, so you can see that we hover right around that thirteen percent of our total population receives special education services. This next graph, I always find interesting. This again is the, these are the thirteen eligibility categories that a child could qualify under for special education services, and it's a breakdown of the number of students that hold that eligibility category as their primary eligibility category. Meaning, students that have speech or language as a secondary wouldn't be noted on here, but we have a total as of December 1st, so December 1st is our actual funding count date. So depending on the numbers we have on December 1st that are reported to the state, that's how we receive our special education funding. So each eligibility category, with, at the state level, there's three levels, so they divide those thirteen eligibility categories into one of three levels, and those levels each have a specific dollar of type to it for funding. So as you can tell here, you know, the main, the largest eligibility category that we serve is that specific learning disability, other health impairment, which is primarily students that have attention deficit, ADHD, fall under other health impairment, autism spectrum disorder, and then language and speech impairment. Just to note, the preschool numbers, that funding changed a couple of years ago where we get one dollar amount if they fall between three and five years old. Prior to that, they were included in those eligibility categories. So Dr. Kaufman asked me to share a little bit about the Power School Special Programs. You might have heard about this in the news, it was a pretty hot topic at the start of the school year. I want to first highlight the positives. We always try to find the positives in everything. This is a new statewide IEP program, so all public schools within the state of Indiana move to Power School Special Programs. It communicates directly with DEX, the Data Exchange Component of Power School, so when we enter information into the IEP system, it talks to that data exchange system, so that's a positive. Once we have all of our kids entered into Power School Special Programs, the reports and the data that we'll be able to run should be really helpful information to our buildings. We'll have consistency across the state, so as kids move between districts, it's a really easy transfer process with their documents in the system. With anything new, it's important that we provide support. This has been a massive lift to our team. Unfortunately, despite all of the things that happen at the state level that I'll never be privy to, for whatever reason, this program was rolled out to us on July 18th, and it was rolled out to directors at the same time that it was rolled out to our teaching staff. So it was really hard to get ahead, to support our team, and I felt for the districts that were already in school on July 18th. We were fortunate to have a couple of weeks. So out of the day we held, actually today was our thirty-third help session, so whether those are here in person at DESC, whether we're meeting at the building level or providing virtual meetings, we're providing plenty of opportunities for our staff to ask questions, you know, sit with somebody that can walk them through this new program. Because even though the compliance components are similar, when you're having to navigate and enter and it's very clicky, it's just a lot, it's very technique. We have an IEP-supporting document and a procedures manual that's quite lengthy that are resources for our teachers. Those are in final, the final stage. Unfortunately, it seems like every weekend, Power School makes an update, and every Monday morning, we just don't know what we're going to get. Things that were working quite well are no longer working, so it's just been hard to stay ahead, but there's apparently a Facebook group. I'm not a part of it, but from what I hear, I think our team is killing it with this program. They have been so flexible, they're accessing the resources, they're reaching out for help. Again, our priority is to work with the kids, but they know how important it is to be compliant, and so they're taking this very seriously. We're going to keep an eye on some things. There are some misalignments with the law, so we're supplementing to make sure that we're covered right now. We're sending in help tickets like crazy. I wish that their speed aligned with my speed, but I get that that's not everybody's speed. It is what it is, it's here to stay, we're going to do the best that we can to push forward, but it is getting better. So I feel like every week, we're making forward momentum. This is the amazing team that I referenced here. Too many people to name individually, but we couldn't do this work without a single one of them. It's really amazing to step back and think about how lucky our kids are, how fortunate our building teams are to have all of this knowledge at the table when we're talking about kids. I really couldn't ask for a better group of people to serve alongside. There's a lot of great work that we do. These are just some of the highlights. We have a district autism behavior team. That team, we have representatives from every building. They're there to serve colleagues within their building if they have questions about behavior or serving students with autism, just focusing on building capacity there. We are really proud of the work we do in terms of professional development for our support staff. You saw on the previous slide, we have about a hundred and twenty support staff that work with us. They are key to the work that we do, but they did not go to school, most of them, to be in special education. So thanks to the help of Katie O'Brien, my other assistant director, and Amy Signet and Pierce, they lead the professional development and our department chair, Marianne Neighbors at the high school. They lead our professional development for support staff, and it's so intentional. We get feedback from them, and that's how they design their professional development for the following year. When I came back to where we started, it's optional for them to attend at the beginning of the school year. When we first started this, we would maybe be lucky to get twenty, and this past year, we had over seventy people attend that training, which I just think goes to show how valuable they find the work that Katie and Amy provide for them. Speaking of Katie and Amy, we added a third non-violent crisis intervention trainer this year, Amy Peltzer, is one of our social workers at Zionsville West. By law, we have to have building-level crisis teams trained, so these three ladies provide that training at the start of the year, as well as provide follow-up throughout the year. They also provide preventative de-escalation support to all building staff throughout the course of the year, based on building principles. As I mentioned, you know, we have, we're really fortunate to have Chris and Christine walk alongside us. With all the work we're doing with literacy, they don't leave us behind. They instead say, come on, we're all in this together. So it's been really great to have the support from Chris and Christine as we work on literacy instruction, data collection, progress monitoring, just to make sure that we're bringing the best supports to kids in special education as well. As you know, we do a huge disability awareness week in March, so that will be upcoming this year, and then I feel like it's important to always highlight our multiple engagement opportunities we have for students. Zionsville Community High School continues to have the largest best buddies chapter in the state of Indiana, which I think is exceptional. Zionsville Middle School, Zionsville West, and Pleasant View also have best buddies chapters. It's so neat to watch those relationships that start at Pleasant View last through high school. We have unified sports at the high school, we have the century concert that I know some of you have attended that Evan Schroeder puts on, we have adaptive classes at Pleasant View, Zionsville West, Zionsville Middle, and the high school for our students in special education, and then as you know, we have our Unified Champion event. And so if you would humor me, I don't know how to make this link work.
Oh.
Do you know how to do that?
We tried. I didn't know.
We're going to end with a really great video. That Jane did for, Dana did for us. It's okay, we don't mean to hear this part.
I apologize, I didn't test for this.
No, it's okay. Again, it's nothing important. Sorry, I was taken on the spot. For your, for your support of the Unified Champion track and field partners and athletes. Thanks, Pam.
I love to see people smile, I like to see them working hard.
I just like to see everyone just coming out. It's wonderful. Don't tell anyone.
Sorry to get through that without tearing up a little bit, but that's why we do what we do. I welcome any questions that you have.
Just so I know if I understand it correctly, so the three to twenty-two, is three to twenty-two or until graduation, or is it?
Exactly. So a family can choose to program complete sooner. So the students that are on diploma track typically graduate with their same-aged peers. The students that are in that essential skills track, they're typically the ones that might take a little bit longer, but they could stay through their twenty-second birthday. Some families choose to stay until they have to leave, and other families will work with their case conference to say, hey, we're going to be done at twenty.
Okay. Makes sense, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
Casey, I just want to thank you not only for your brilliant sharing with everyone in the room tonight, but also the profound leadership you provide in our district to support our students, our families, and our teachers. Thank you for coming tonight. Just highlighting, I know you like to talk numbers, but I know in your heart with the relationships you've built, these are individual students and families, so thank you for your Some other celebrations this evening, just briefly, over the weekend, very exciting to see Our Lady Eagles golf team at Zionsville Community High School, having a back-to-back championship, both at the team level, as well as sophomore Taylor Snively earning her second state championship title. Very excited for all of these young ladies, they're wonderful in the classroom and out on the course. The girls playing the state championship this year, Taylor Snively, Amaya Wade, Olivia Patton, Paige Hemming, and Avery Lewis, coached by ZCHS alum Maggie Nobby, and assistant coaches Brian Nobby and Kevin Klein as well. So we're really thrilled and just super excited to continue celebrating them. We look forward to additional celebration opportunities in the future, but that is an exciting note to share this evening. We also want to thank, again, all of our parents who helped provide a great fundraising opportunity, the primary fundraising opportunity for our elementary schools, the PTO Jogathon events. Very well-attended by many parent volunteers and special guests, Duck Bowls from the Indianapolis Five Hundred, and many other race car drivers that visited our campuses and helped celebrate with our students, but it's a key fundraising event for our elementaries, and we're very appreciative of the support of our families. Those dollars raised continue to go directly back into the classroom through various PTO enrichment grants for our schools, technology purchases, recess purchases, and other fun events for our students, and we're very appreciative of their generous support. Also, since we last met, we have the opportunity to host our juniors and seniors at the career fair in the Fieldhouse last week, and this is an exciting opportunity. We had a little over 60 employers that we partnered alongside Junior Achievement to bring these various groups into the building, so that our students have the opportunity to engage, ask thoughtful questions, practice those norms of social interaction, and eye contact handshakes, and asking thoughtful questions about potential careers and requirements of such. So it was a great opportunity to provide students just a little bit of experience with considering future career interests, and just a nice way to find connections. We did have several employers who were present who were offering internship opportunities, the Skim Corporation being one, and I know board members, you recently had the opportunity to meet two of our interns who are engaged with the Skim Corporation through construction management interests that they have. So we just wanna thank the high school team for bringing this to life for our juniors and seniors. As I mentioned last week, we had a very successful groundbreaking opportunity for our early learning center and ESC building that will be completed in the fall of 2027. The site was delicately prepared for us by our interns, and that was really exciting. Luke Peeler and Dan Carr being able to see two of our students prepare that site for us as we participated in the groundbreaking exercise. So thank you to everyone who was able to attend as we get that project underway for our community. Casey mentioned adding many of the preschool programs that we've added in the last several years. So this is an excellent opportunity to provide both the quantity of preschool programming as well as the quality that we expect to serve our families with, and it will be a great way to increase capacity back into our schools by providing five classroom spaces back at ZMS, as well as 19 spaces back in the K4 setting to address those capacity concerns. We're really excited to be able to provide this option in southeastern Boone County. We are on our week just ahead of the Fall Break Week, so as a reminder, next week we do have childcare access opportunities available at Pleasant View Elementary. Registration is still available. There's many experiences that are planned, a couple of field trips, swimming at the Aquatic Center here at Zionsville Community High School, scavenger hunts, games, crafts, all kinds of engaging opportunities. So families that are looking for some support can find that online through our GroGee Childcare Access. There's also the opportunity for families to obtain some lunches and breakfasts, if that's an opportunity that families may desire. That information is found in all of our school, what, excuse me, our school newsletters, made available through Shalom House, and we encourage families to ask questions of their school counselors if they need additional clarification or additional support over the break. And that, this evening concludes my report, unless there's any questions tonight.
I don't have a question or statement, just a plug for Shalom House. They lost a significant amount of funding when the administration at the town level decided to stop funding some of their programming, so there's a significant need there. And if you are inspired by the work that they do, I encourage you to look into volunteering with them or making a donation to support the work they do, both here and in the rest of Boone County.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll move along. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any questions or discussion from the board of those items? If that, I would do a question.
Not an important thing, but I'm trying to figure out what the, for the Seattle trip, what the, the, what's the last word referencing, is that a meaning it's highlighting, but is it referencing part of the trip or something going on with the trip?
The last word in the covered item? This is the Seattle trip for art teachers. Or, excuse me, it's led by the art department by art teacher Brenda Jolly.
Oh, is that Irving? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. I was thinking the, like, this word in Argentina or something. I'm figuring out.
My apologies, Mr. Murphy.
Okay, okay, sorry, my bad. So no, I don't have a question, but...
Okay, if there's no questions, I don't have any motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, including minutes of previous meetings, personnel, special requests, which may include overnight out-of-state field trips, acceptance of donations, disposal of surplus equipment, ECA and security equipment purchases, contract renewals, non-renewals, and attorney-defended actions. The monthly financial report, including claims of $6,974,813.63, and payroll in the amount of $5,66,105.49.
Second. So motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Conceded agenda passes 5-0. Next up on the agenda, through old business, oh, excuse me, the donations.
Thank you to the Sonya PTO for donating $3,265 for the fall teacher enrichment grants. At ZMS, David Williamson donated Eastman Barrett on it, the cost of $500 to the band class. Zionsville Williams Park donated Z West $300 for the band program. The Z West PTO donated $3,272.01 for fall teacher enrichment grants. The Chamber of Commerce donated $500 to the ZCHS band, and also $500 to the ZCHS lacrosse. And finally, the Zionsville Lumber Association donated a podium microphone at the cost of $648 for use in the starting performing arts center. Thank you.
Okay, now moving on to old business, the policy repeal, second meeting. As board members, last meeting, we had a first reading for your consideration to repeal the policy on TAG, which is the Teacher Appreciation Grant. You recall that in the last legislative session, there were considerable adjustments to the TAG policy. Our current CCS policy will not be applicable. We have taken the liberty of notifying the Indiana Department of Education that we are opting in to receive the TAG dollars. This is now a competitive process by which, for districts who are participating, we will not be able to identify more than 20% of our certified teachers as eligible grant recipients. There are various categories for the new TAG dollars. Tier one is a recognition stipend of $3,500. Tier two is an exemplary stipend of $5,000, and tier three is an exemplary plus stipend of $7,500. There is concern, we should find out by the end of this month, what dollars we may be able to be eligible to compete for. However, if even 20% of our current certified staff received the tier one recognition stipend, that exceeds any amount we've ever received for the TAG dollars. So we're really interested by the end of the month to know how much funding. We're appreciative of the opportunity, but the parameters by which this will be operationalized will be vastly different than what we've done before. We will continue to have meaningful discussion with DEA and how we plan to look at this opportunity to make dollars available to our teachers, but again, per the new law, only 20% of our teachers can be identified as eligible, which is vastly different than in years prior. In years prior, those teachers rated effective or highly effective were able to receive the TAG dollars, and that amount was roughly $500 for our school corporation, and varied from school corporation across the state. We will potentially engage in this process, have the applications submitted, and we should receive the actual dollars then by April, of which we'll have 60 days to distribute funds. So we're asking you to repeal this policy that's been longstanding for us since TAG was in place, because the operationalizing of the new TAG system is completely different. I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have. Have there been any changes to this specific language in the last, since our first reading? No, we're just asking for a complete repeal of the policy, and then should the new distribution does not appear to require a policy to be put in place, of course, if that becomes a requirement that's made known to us, we will break suggested language to you for your consideration in the future. Any questions or discussions?
Maybe just one question, it's not really directly to the policy, but if only 20% of staff will be eligible, how is that gonna be determined?
That will be an effort that we will be undertaking between now and the end of January. So we are told that by October 25th, we should have the estimated dollars that will be eligible to compete for. There are also going to be a series of webinars and meetings for teachers and administrators to attend, as there has been some preliminary guidance that's been provided by the Indiana Department of Education, but there are some parameters in which teachers must demonstrate certain qualifications to be able to be competitive in this process. Some of that entails growth outcomes for students, some of that entails leadership and mentorship. So there will need to be a process that we collaboratively come together to utilize in Zionsville Community Schools.
So if you've already been doing a great job, it's gonna be hard to have a lot of student growth necessarily?
Yes.
Seems like it's... I keep my thoughts to myself.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, I don't have any motion. Repeal the policy.
I move to repeal policy 3220.01, Teacher Appreciation Grant, subject is no longer current with new Indiana Department of Education guidance and facilitation.
Second. So motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, we will move to new business items. Item number 6A, adoption of 2026 budget resolutions.
Good evening, board. Tonight concludes the 2026 public budget process with the adoption of the proposed budget, the capital projects plan, bus replacement plan, and other related resolutions. As you may recall from our budget hearing on September 8th, our 2026 proposed budget is for $155,35,298. It's a big one.
Can you hear me? It's just have to hold it in close, it's batteries working. Can you hear me now? How much time should we be giving?
It's worse than...
Is it worse now? What are you supposed to do?
Can I just hold it up close, turn it back on?
Close to your mouth, sorry. Can I just swallow it? Swallow it, yeah. Let's try to get it there.
Sing it, Regina, sing it.
Sing it. At least it's not my budget presentation. It is. We'll pick up the sign on the podcast for sure. Can you hear me now?
Okay, so, to restart, tonight concludes the 2026 public budget process with the adoption of the proposed budget, capital projects plan, bus replacement plan, and other related resolutions. As you may recall from our budget hearing on September 8th, our 2026 proposed budget is for $155,35,298. A few key points, just to revisit our budget, 47% of our budget expenditures across all funds are for salaries and benefits. 90% of the education fund and the operating referendum fund are directly for instructional staff and salaries and benefits. The operating referendum fund will continue to support approximately one in three teachers in more than 20 different teaching positions, representing 165 individuals. Our budget will continue to be balanced, as allowed by the DLGF, while also providing tax rate stability for our taxpayers. As we received our assessed value last week, we anticipate our final tax rate to remain at or near our current rate of $1.29. There are six resolutions and one motion needing approval tonight. Do you have any questions?
We should probably just publicly acknowledge that our assessed value certifications came back within our plan.
Yes.
And nothing has changed significantly from the original presentation, but by the hair on our chin, 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 we've got it by the end of the process, right?
Yes, I was very thankful that we got it before the adoption meeting. Yeah, that it's been unheard of for different units across the state to adopt without their certified assessed value, because there, last I checked, there were still eight counties waiting. So it moved up a little bit in the whole brain scheme of everything, but they did come back within the conservative estimates that we used when we prepared the budget. We grew 0.87%, not what we normally see, but about what we were expecting to see with the new structure around the homeowner deductions. So while gross assessed value did increase, it's the way the new deduction strategy that was enacted with the enrolled act one changes everybody's taxable value, so that the taxable value of the homes in Zionsville pretty much stays the same.
Is that a wow, horrible bet? I mean, I know, is that gonna be your answer?
I won't answer.
Or am I not answering it? You're asking in a way that makes sense.
I know what you're asking. As it stands now, in the current way the legislation reads, it is a five-year phase in of the new deduction strategies. So we will continue to experience this type of drop in taxable value of homes from now until 2031. So this was the first step, this was the smallest change that we were expecting to see, what we will see in the years 27 through 31. We do expect to be slightly larger impacts on our certified net assessed value, so for the next five years, we are preparing for and working towards what the budget will look like when our certified net assessed value will be dropping within the next five years.
No good news. Well, thank you for the updates and your work on this. I do feel good that we're within the plan and have some comfort level, but what we're seeing tonight is, is what we can do as a cert, I like the certainty of that. Any other questions or discussion? Do we need to call these individually?
Yes.
So it looks like the first resolution for consideration is appropriations and tax rates. Is there a motion?
I move adoption of the resolution of appropriations and tax rates, as presented.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
5-0. The second action is the submission of the 2026 budget. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the action to authorize submission of the 2026 budget, as presented.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
5-0. The next is the bus replacement plan resolution.
Move adoption of the resolution to adopt 2026 to 2030 bus replacement plan, as presented.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
5-0. The next is the resolution of the capital projects plan.
I move adoption of the resolution to adopt the 2026, 2028, 32028 capital projects plan, as presented.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number five, the resolution for transfers.
We grew point eight seven percent, not what we normally see, but about what we were expecting to see with the new structure around the homeowner deductions. So while gross assessed value did increase, it's the way the new deduction strategy that was enacted with the Enrolled Act One changes everybody's taxable value so that the taxable value of homes in Zionsville will pretty much stay the same.
Is that a wow, horrible bad? I mean, I know, is that going to be your answer?
I won't.
By not answering it, you're asking the way that...
I know what you're asking. As it stands now, the current way the legislation reads, it is a five-year phase-in of the new deduction strategies. So we will continue to experience this type of drop in taxable value of homes from now until twenty thirty-one. So this was the first step, this was the smallest change that we were expecting to see, what we will see in the years twenty-seven through thirty-one. We do expect to be slightly larger impacts on our certified net assessed value. So for the next five years, we are preparing for and working towards what the budget will look like when our certified net assessed value will be dropping for the next five years.
No good news. Well, thank you for the updates and your work on this. I do feel good that we're within the plan and have some comfort level that what we're seeing tonight is what we can do and is assert, I like to assert to that. Any other questions or discussion? Do we need to call these individually?
Yes.
So it looks like the first resolution for consideration is appropriations and tax rates. Is there a motion?
I move adoption of the resolution of appropriations and tax rates, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero. The second action is the submission of the Twenty Twenty-Six budget. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the action to authorize submission of the Twenty Twenty-Six budget, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
The next is the Bus Replacement Plan Resolution.
Move adoption of the resolution to adopt Twenty Twenty-Six to Twenty Thirty Bus Replacement Plan, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero.
The next is the Resolution of the Capital Projects Plan.
I move adoption of the resolution to adopt the Twenty Twenty-Six, Twenty Twenty-Eight, three Twenty Twenty-Eight Capital Projects Plan, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Zero.
Number five, the Resolution for Transfers.
I move adoption of the resolution to authorize transfers from the Education Fund to the Operations Fund, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next, the Resolution for Reductions and Appropriations.
I move adoption of the resolution to authorize reductions in Twenty Twenty-Five Appropriations, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five zero, and finally, the Resolution for Total Tax Rate.
I move adoption of the resolution to authorize a total tax rate for the Twenty Twenty-Six budget, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Something else, okay, so just to comment, I've seen, I know many of us probably got flyers in the mail this week about, you know, education in Indiana from elected officials, sort of talking about how it's the highest amount of funding that's ever been put into education in Indiana. And it's just kind of like bragging about that at the same time as you're planning a five-year dramatic cut to public education through the other forms of funding is sort of disingenuous, in my opinion, coupled with the idea that, you know, the money that's been put into it isn't worth nearly as much as money was worth five years ago. So anyway, all of that is to say, if you value public education, I hope that you will demonstrate that when you have the option to vote for referendums when they become, when they come onto the ballot, because all of this really isn't going to be possible if that goes away. And that's going to be the thing that keeps teachers paid and keeps lights on and keeps buses rolling. And that's the mechanism that this state is giving us. And so I hope people are mindful of that because the people we voted for aren't funding public education. Those are the opinions of Michael Burke.
Anyone else any other comments? Next, new business item six B, Zionsville Community High School Course Additions.
Good evening. I'm Maureen Bornt, I'm the Assistant Principal at the high school. I work with academic services, and I'm here for a proposal for new course additions to the ZCHS high school program studies. Each year, we at the high school look at our student enrollments. We look at our courses and those courses in relation to Indiana's diploma requirements, as well as student interest, to review our high school course catalog. So the potential additions that you were presented for, were presented to you, were reviewed by a team at that high school, composed of a teacher from each of our departments, myself, Karen McDaniel, our principal, Cindy King, there is our ZEA representative, and as well as our counseling director. So those are the courses you have proposed in front of you, and I don't have any answer of any questions that you might have on those.
I don't have any questions. I just love the creativity and the options. And I think it's just really fascinating and great for our students to have options like this, so thank you for the work.
We're excited. Thank you for your work.
I completely agree, and kind of want to take some of these courses, but... I, just thinking back, my daughter graduated in twenty nineteen, but I don't know if this is still done. We had to, we got to like bid on art, like she was in a surrounding class. Anyways, and someone else was bidding against it, I was like, this is funny. Anyways, it was very funny, but I was curious if any of these, like the arts, the jewelry, the printmaking, like are there any opportunities for these students, like sell raise money in business related or...
Great question. I don't know that answer.
Well, I just remember, it was like super fun, like I was excited, like I was very pumped to, like...
Yeah, we do, yeah, we do a showcase at the, our students do the pack lobby. We have those always out before the performances in the spring on students, but...
Well, I just, I mean, the jewelry can go...
Yeah, absolutely.
The show choir, like, we don't know, but it's great, I love it.
Thanks, for sure.
Will the addition of the classes, do we have room spaces available for all of these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the CDs will be for next year, so will Robin have those on, immediately on the reports talking about new hires, or is that a plan over the next several months that we'll have these new hires available?
Typically, if I could jump in for Ms. Porto, after the courses are approved and then made available for student selection, the high school counselors will have their individual meetings with students. Students and families have the opportunity to register for courses. And then the magic happens where Ms. Porto does quite a bit of gymnastics alongside the rest of the team at the high school to determine what are the staffing needs. Our department chairs will weigh in and help determine who will teach various courses, whether that's AP Chemistry versus ICP, so on and so forth. After all of that work is done, those meetings occur with Robin Nelson, Regina, and myself to look at what additional staffing might we need to come in a request from the school corporation. So in terms of seeing those positions, if any, to appear on a consent agenda, that will not come until much later in the spring, typically when we do that staffing recommendation. So there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that begins really with the great work that the team has done tonight to bring these recommendations to you for consideration. Then after course requests, we'll be able to look at the adult staffing needs.
So it's not immediate, one for one?
Correct. So the addition of these courses doesn't necessarily mean there will be additional teachers that are recommended to you for consideration. It could be changes in the courses themselves that are assigned to teachers for their caseload.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I would maintain a motion.
I move to approve all the presented courses to the Zionsville Community High School program of studies.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, Ms. Porto.
Thank you.
Last item on our agenda, this is coming back, six C, Curriculum Material Fees.
You may recall that we historically brought forward a board and approval for listing fees for textbook rental payments to pass along to our families. In twenty twenty-three, legislation was enacted that changed this process, eliminating the requirement to pass text, to pass textbook fees along to our families. Now, the wording at that time was not particularly clear on what was included in the legislative change. In twenty twenty-five, clarity was provided, defining the difference between what is textbook items and what are supplemental to instruction or consumable in measure. At this time, while we still cannot pass along the fees for textbook items or the technology device, we are allowed to pass along fees to our families for the supplemental items, the items that are supplemental to instruction. So for you tonight, consideration is a listing of supplemental curriculum material fees. And should be approved, one will begin by the beginning of November, following communications to families. And one thing I really want to point out is this is very similar to the consumable fees that were on parent statements in twenty twenty-three or prior to twenty twenty-three, but these are the consumable items, these are supplemental to instruction. This is not our textbooks, it is not anything that is required for the instruction of a class. It is some extra pieces that help provide a robust instructional experience to our children. And we took a very conservative approach at looking at everything that teachers used in the classrooms. If it was even hensing as required to instruction, it is not included on these lists. So we kind of just dipped our toe back into the idea of what is defined as textbook versus supplemental for instruction.
Is the state doing any kind of review of these items?
Not that I have heard of yet, beyond what the State Board accounts does every time that they come in and do their items.
So you said we'd start billing in November, that's for the first semester of this year? Or for the entire year?
So we bill K through eight for the entire year.
Yeah.
K four is flat fee, five through eight is based on the schedules, but most five through eight don't really change their schedule in the spring. So we do bill for the whole thing. If they change, we make adjustments then. Nine through twelve, we'll get a fall billing and a spring billing because they do a lot of course changes and things like that, so they will see semester billing.
When will the spring semester billing?
We bill every month so that we send out reminders. I would wager that the first true second semester high school billing will come out late February and maybe March. We want to make sure that they get in the class, settled with their schedule, and then all those changes circulate all the way over so that we don't, you know, bill these murder last year. High school numbers dropped, but it just takes time to get through all of our school systems. So it's usually, we'll probably catch them up late February, but with February break, maybe early March.
So you said that there'd be a communication plan that probably wanted to modify and various newsletters, is that the plan for communicating?
Not bar bill. Dr. Kaufman's Communications, the summary from the board meeting, just lots of different places so that we're not surprised if families when they see a bill.
I know it was confusing when the bills stopped happening, and so it would be just as equally as confusing.
I'm probably quite hoping with all the confusion that we've faced over the last two years where people still ask me, hey, where's my bill? That the reinstatement of the bill is...
It's easy. I'm sorry, I kept calling and asking.
Great question, Mr. Cousins, and we will send as many places and as clear as possible for all of our families. Many of our peer districts as well are reverting back to, or plan to revert back to a very similar process to allow, for these allowable expenses to be supportive of the Education Fund.
You know, probably, I know we redesigned the website, so we probably the finance section of the website, or...
We'll look at probably where the best, we're trying to not have redundancies across various tabs, so we'll certainly look at that. And there's options to address, I think, your concern in making sure it's front and center. So we'll certainly look at that with final site, the best way to keep that.
I just thought if we do, if we could, say during the podcast, and we can say, ah, here's where I need to look for it.
The live stream now.
That's true. I'm hiding behind Regina's.
I will say, I do think, just for, you know, people who are sort of trying to plan ahead, that looking through the fees, it looks pretty modest compared to what they used to be. So just people are, you know, as always, if there are families who are finding this to be a hardship, they're, reach out to your building level administrators or counselors and figure that out with you, so...
We offer payment plans for anybody who is interested, unless you really, you have to pay it by the end of the school year. So if you can make monthly payments, we'll set you up on a payment plan, we'll work with families however they need. We also do provide assistance for those that are on the group meal free reuse programs. And we also have other assistance that we can provide. So should families find themselves in hardship there, that you need to communicate, but thus we will work with them.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of School Trustees approve the schedules of supplemental curriculum material fees for the Twenty Twenty-Five, Twenty Twenty-Six school year, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. That concludes the agenda. Any other items for the deal being worked? If not, I adjourned. Thank you.